Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, roll call, Lisa.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Ohusky.
Here.
Darla Leclaire.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Shannon Derby.
Here.
Bill Leclaire.
Here.
Doug Brandt.
Tim Patri.
Here.
Thank you all for that. We'll skip over number four because Doug is absent tonight. I didn't hear from him and I think he's on vacation. So we'll go down to number five, the public hearing. Public hearing tonight is on the ordinance to amend the district map section 10-1-381 of the municipal code for rezoning 2004, I'm sorry, 2004, 2006, 14th Street from I-2 Industrial District to B-1 Business District. After the public hearing, the recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance as recommended by the plan commission. Is a public hearing? If anyone is here to talk about the public hearing tonight, there will be three calls. If you wish to speak, you can step up to the podium on your left. Please state your name and address for the record and then go from there. So I will open up call number one for this public hearing. Seeing nothing, I'll close call one and open up call number two. Call number two, I'll close call number two and then open up call number three, the final one. Seeing no one else, I'll close call three and look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Bonnie. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Shannon. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Lisa.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Ohusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclaire.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclaire.
Aye.
Tim Patri.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
All in favor.
Number six, input from the public. If you wish to speak about something that is on this agenda or something you want on a future agenda or just something in general, please step up to the podium again on your left, state your name and address for the location. Input from the public. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Pitch. I am a native-born son of the village of Cleveland and current resident of the village of Francis Creek. At last, at last month's meeting of the public utilities committee, I lodged a complaint regarding my internet service in Francis Creek, which is served by Spectrum out of a hub here in Two Rivers. I was under the impression at that time that the public utilities commission had, is where I could lodge a complaint or make a complaint. Subsequent to that, I have learned that there is both state and federal law that prevents municipalities from interacting with internet service providers. My subsequent email to members of the committee was perhaps a bit aggressive and an apology might be in order to those who received that email. I was, however, disappointed that the members of that committee didn't engage with me on this issue. But despite all of that, I come to you tonight, and the members of the committee and the president have all received this document. And this document is both good news and bad news. We'll go to the bad news first. The bad news is I have done testing around the Francis Creek area, including my residence, which I provided to the committee last month, to show how abysmal the internet service is provided by Charter. Subsequent to that, I have done testing, first of all, I'm a retired computer engineer. I have done testing in the Mishikot and Two Rivers areas and am finding the same dismal results. Earlier this month, I have spoken with the village boards of Francis Creek and Mishikot and relayed the same information I'm about to relay to you. So what, what the first part of these documents consist of is testing data at various locations around the city that show the service being provided by Charter Spectrum is significantly less than is advertised and, and less than what is actually being billed for, including what the city itself is getting billed for. That's the bad news part. Your internet service is bad. The good news part is there is something you can do about it. On the, toward the end of this document, the last three pages, there is information about the BEED program. The BEED program is a federal acronym that is a result of the infrastructure program, the bipartisan infrastructure program that was passed into law, which designates about $45 billion to fund rural broadband improvements in this country. $1 billion approximately of that money has come to Wisconsin. And about $10 million of that, those dollars are available to the county of Manitowoc. So my, my mission here today is as an ambassador of this program that not only would serve to improve my internet service, but would, would serve to improve the internet service across the entire county, especially in northern Manitowoc County, which is less well-served than southern Manitowoc County, I'll put it that way, in terms of speeds, in terms of competition, in terms of options and so forth. It's, we are the up north of the county here, especially in Mishikot and Francis Creek. I am a citizen member of the Manitowoc County Broadband Task Force, which meets at Progress Lakeshore. And I believe Tim is a member of that task force as well. At least he was shown on a list as being a member, whether he was told he was on the list or not. It could have been a meeting that he wasn't at, and that's when people get appointed to things usually, in my experience. Anyway, I come bringing this information and following that information about the BEED program, there is some information that shows you the mapping they have done in the county that was done by the FCC and by the Public Service Commission that kind of maps out what the internet coverage looks like. The focus of the BEED program is to, is to provide internet access to everybody, first of all. And secondly, it's to improve the overall performance of the network, primarily by laying fiber optic cable. Fiber optic cable is a promise that's been made by the cable companies and telecommunications companies for 30 years. It's right up there with the Jetsons flying cars that we never got. Only, we funded this broadband expansion, estimates are, to the tune of $1.2 trillion over the last 30 years, and have precious, precious little to show for it. And that's primarily due to lack of competition. And President Biden, when he signed in this money, he said that capitalism without competition is exploitation. And we are in that zone here in Manitowoc County. Excuse me. So here's what I'm asking, this is what I'm providing to do. Obviously, I put a lot of work into it at, in some expense in producing all of this for you. Here's what my ask would be. Discuss it among yourselves, and if you think it's appropriate, pass a resolution expressing interest in this program, in this BEED program. Make it known to Manitowoc County, Bob Ziegabauer in particular, that you are interested in your share of this $10 million, whatever that might be. Attend the Progress Lakeshore Broadband Task Force meetings with your county representative, if you can. And then, if you want to get more information on this and how to interact with this, this is a complex program. This is a combination of federal rules and state rules and regulations. It's a complex program. The county itself has engaged, oh, Great North, what are they called, the 12-county organization nonprofit, New North, thank you, has engaged them and a consultant by the name of August Neverman. And then, in Manitowoc itself, Progress Lakeshore is kind of taking the lead on this. The last meeting I was at of this task force, Town and Newton was there, and Town and Newton, those words came out of Bob Ziegabauer's mouth several times during the meeting. So they have his ear. Nobody else does. He mentioned Francis Creek only because he saw me in the room, and I'd been bombarding it with emails, so he gave me a minor mention. But, but Town and Newton was there with their county rep and expressing interest in this program. So my, my encouragement to you is to get involved in this if you want to improve the internet in, in this particular city, if you want to remain competitive. Door County is laying thousands of miles of fiber optic cable as we speak to, to remain attractive for economic development and tourism and so forth. This is a critical thing. This is a critical, broadband is a, is a critical thing to do. So my contact information is on there. I won't take up any more of your time. If you want to put it on a future agenda and dive deeper into this, I'm happy to assist you with it. I am, as I said, a retired computer engineer and very moving my broadband and, and the broadband in the county, so. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Input from the public?
Hello, my name is Jim Bob Scoot. I live on 1800 Jefferson Street here in Two Rivers, Wisconsin. I go to a lot of high school baseball games in Two Rivers, and we just had another one get canceled because of rain. We were supposed to play keel. There, it, it seems like a lot of their games get canceled because of rain or just kind of not great playing conditions for the high school ballplayers. And I know that in Ryanlander that they have a sports complex where they have an indoor softball diamond, baseball diamond, all indoors, so they don't, the players don't have to play in wet conditions, and that, you know, fans and spectators and family can watch their, watch their kids, their sons and daughters play baseball and softball. I was wondering, maybe here in town, it would be kind of nice if a few, a few, a few dollars could be maybe saved up for maybe a sports complex for, for the high school baseball players and the softball, you know, for Two Rivers. That'd be really nice.
Very much. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone else? On to number seven, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything?
I received some comments from citizens about Airbnb, and I told the citizen that we've got a pending work session, we're going to talk about that, so I'll discuss that further.
Okay.
I've had complaints about, I don't know if it's just the signage, but on 22nd Streets where you turn, where it's a turn-left-only lane, on heading west, kind of, or shooting straight through with signage or marks on the road.
Or across from...
Quick trip?
Quick trip there.
Yeah, people in the left lane that are supposed to be turning left, and then they, people that are turning crossways and they go straight through and almost hit them, and then they think the other guys have fallen.
Okay. Gotcha. Yeah, I think Matt is making note of that, as he's shaking, as I said. Anything else? Nope. What about?
(inaudible)
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 Slow no wake buoys.
You know, that's something we can talk with the DNR about, regulations. Mike had already talked to them in the past about on our beach. I think that's still navigation area, so I don't know how much we could do, but we could talk to them in the Coast Guard.
This person that came to me, talked to the Coast...
I'd have to confirm that though with the Coast Guard, regardless of what somebody said they heard, because we get that quite a bit, and then we find out what the regulations are as far as... Our Coast Guard, our Coast Guard, for instance, does all the buoys that are out there right now, for the most part, really all they do anymore.
Speak with them.
Slow no wake buoys?
Yeah. Said it was large pontoon boats that were causing the biggest problem, tritunes, they were causing a big wake, big boats that...
Yeah, Parks and Rec puts out the coordinates with Susie Q to put out the buoys on the West Twin River. We must not have any on the East Twin River, so, yeah, we'll just have to look in to see if there's more and the price on those and all that kind of stuff, so.
Actually, if you talk to John.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Moving on to council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything to share? Go ahead, Adam.
The ad hoc committee for the Swim Center had its last meeting here on Wednesday, and they are set to give a presentation to city council, which should come probably sometime in June. So get set to see that and look at all the findings that we had from that.
Awesome. Anyone else?
All right, for Main Street, I'm sure you've all seen the mural that's going up on the Seeds and Beans building. That's going to be our first one through Main Street, and we are anticipating having a, an public art project, one per year. So we just have to see how this turns out. So far, it's looking great. It is right in step with the National Ornithological Meeting at Woodland Dune, so this is all going hand in hand. So if anybody has any thoughts or suggestions on what might make really nice murals, just let Main Street know. Also, we have some, we're considering some sign and facade grants along Washington Street, which will really make, they'll really improve our downtown. We just have to hammer it out. And then for the Environmental Advisory Board, we do have a meeting tomorrow evening, and some of the things that we're working on right now, of course, is the front yard vegetable garden. We were having a pretty good, pretty good interest in, at least from what I am being told, proof is in the pudding, we'll have to see how many people actually sign up at the very end. So we have that going, and we're working on some website pages that would give our residents an opportunity to get more information on like how to build a rain garden and why, how a stormwater pond works and why it's important, all various types of things to include like keep our wildlife wild, what hap, what do you do if you come across an injured or abandoned wild animal? So there's a lot of things going on with that. We're just playing around with it now to see if it might do some good. Other than that, I mean, you know, we're just going full steam ahead.
Thank you. Anything else?
I had the library board, excuse me, meeting, and we discussed how successful World on the Move was, and just other immersive play stations that they're going to be coming up with in the future. So it was really neat to hear about that and how they work with the school boards and with the local healthcare providers to provide books to newborns.
Okay. Then on to the acting city manager's report. Ben?
Starting off, I'd like to ask Mike to come up and his staff regarding some invited guests.
All right. We're going to start with Heather, our senior center supervisor. Heather had an interesting conversation with a local legislator, and so this is kind of your intergovernmental report based on Heather's conversations that she's had recently. So.
Hello. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Heather Island felt. I'm the senior center supervisor. Part of my duties, I believe, at the senior center is to advocate for the seniors in our community. So I took a trip with our partners at the ADRC down to Madison last week and attended Aging Advocacy Days. We were able to speak with local legislators, including Representative Tittle, in person, and talk about some focus areas that the ADRC has that more money should be allocated to. We talked about senior transportation or specialized transportation. Two Rivers has the trust car, so our seniors would be pretty in dire straits with transportation if we did not have that. We also talked about falls prevention. We talked about the Meals on Wheels program. For those of you that don't know, we deliver on average 19,000 meals in Two Rivers and the surrounding area just from the Two Rivers Senior Center. We also talked about caregiver support for those folks that are caring for a loved one and are not a paid caregiver. Thank you.
Heather, while you're up, I know, I'm a part of the agent committee too, and I know that you've expressed in reports needs for volunteers in a lot of places, but specifically, and you mentioned both of them, Meals on Wheels and a driver for the trust car. So you want to maybe just embellish on that a little bit?
Sure. For those of you that may not know, the trust car that we speak of, it stands for the Two Rivers Unique Senior Transport. It is funded by the Friends of the Two Rivers Senior Center. The car is purchased and maintained by them. We are able to give rides to seniors within the city limits of Two Rivers. We go out as far as Aurora Hospital. We, on average monthly, over 300 rides. Last year, we gave out 3,600 rides, just in 2023. That means that we need drivers every day. We are only volunteer drivers. And that goes with the Meals on Wheels program also. Like I said before, we deliver 19,000 or more meals per year, and we can only do that with volunteers.
Contact you at the senior center to?
Anybody that wants to contact or wants to volunteer should contact us at the senior center, and we can provide you with the correct documents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next invitee for tonight is Ashley Haggerty. Ashley is our new recreation clerk as of one week ago. So we're very lucky to have Ashley. She's spent time working at Bank First as a teller supervisor, with Shoreline Credit Union as a member account specialist. She's also a graduate of Leadership Mantua County. So we're very lucky to have that kind of blend of leadership, really strong teamwork skills that we got to drill around during the interview process over two interviews. She had to spend some time with her tour with us on the, at the community house, and we got to know her a little bit and thought it'd be a perfect fit. So, yes, so thank you and welcome, Ashley, our new recreation clerk for the front desk over at the community house. Thanks.
So.
Get to go closer to your mic?
All right. I think everybody's got it now. So full-time firefighter, paramedic recruitment, that's to replace Paul Reiser, who's going to be retiring with 23 years in. And also, we're going to, unfortunately, we learned earlier this week from Elizabeth, that unfortunately she'll be leaving us this June 7. Thank you, Elizabeth, for serving the city of Two Rivers for the last six years. Staff has already begun evaluating her position and how to best fulfill that role moving forward. City Hall summer hours started today, so everybody was in earlier at 7:30 and leaving later at 5 o'clock. That will happen Monday through Thursday with four hours on Friday. Mike, did you want to give a, or Matt, rather, an update on Roosevelt?
Overall, Roosevelt is more or less on schedule, except for these little bit of rain delays. The sanitary sewer work is progressing, along with the water main work. They are about halfway done with the total sanitary sewer and work up at 12th Street intersection so that the Public Works crews could then pave the travel lanes on 12th Street. So motorists going eastbound and not be traveling on gravel in that intersection. Next phase, they were working on testing the water main, the water in the water main, to make sure that it was pressure tested, and they were then going to be starting on sanitary laterals and water services for each of the properties, starting from the north and heading south. So the next one is the Neshota Beach Trail, major pathway from Pierce to the concession stand. Public Works crews redid that whole entire trail pathway over the past 20-ish days. And then they also reconstructed the sidewalk along Pierce from 21st to 22nd and put sidewalk in on the west side of Pierce, going to the parking lot south of 21st to accommodate the parking lot and pedestrian, get pedestrian traffic off the street and wider accessibility in that area. So that's one of the projects to help accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists in that area. In the next coming years, we're looking at additional trails in and around the park. So. And then in April, Governor Evers created a proclamation identifying wastewater professional appreciation day, which happens to be this coming Wednesday, and which is an important week because it is actually National Public Works Week as well, which we will go further into. But just wanted to make sure that Governor Evers' proclamation was noted for the wastewater professionals and the appreciation and all the hard work and dedication they do in protecting and promoting the health, safety of overall well-being of all the Wisconsin Knights. So just wanted to make sure we are aware of that proclamation. That's all I have.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep. There we go. Next, e-bikes for the police department. So this is something pretty exciting. Again, a longtime donor to the city of Two Rivers in numerous amount of ways. Luann Smith had reached out and wanted to donate something in a new program and wanted to know what maybe we had in need. And I explained to her that I was looking to revamp our e-bike program, and we had since gotten a grant from WPS for the amount of $1,600. When I explained to her exactly what I wanted to do, she wanted to get the first bike, but then also pick up a little bit more and wanted to purchase two of those. Leander Smith, Leander Men, who you see up here, is one of our officers who came to us. Originally, he's a German born, came to the Green Bay area. We recruited him. He came aboard. He was a track mechanic prior. So he's got a vast knowledge of bikes and how to set them up. So he saved us a ton of money. He did some research, picked out some of the bikes, and I'm happy to say, in essence, with Luann Smith's donation, we were able to get three electric bikes for patrol this year with all the lighting and equipment, as well as get about eight officers trained with the e-bikes. They're a little bit different than I was growing up in the police work, where it's kind of the bring, bring, and flashing your flashlight. These things light up unreal, just like a squad car. They got a siren. I was annoying all our staff when I accidentally turned it on, couldn't figure out how to turn it off. So we'll be excited to get out there. A lot of people have been asking for years to get more patrols out on the, on the trails and down at the beach, and even on the beach, and these will be capable of doing so. They'll also allow officers to still respond to calls without being completely exhausted when they get there. So a plus plus. And we'll also be working with Mantua, who's also got two bikes themselves. So we'll work hand in hand with them. Hopefully have a little bit safer trails and parks this year. And next, the Parks and Rec summer event update. The main thing here is in the brochures that you've already seen out and about, there's either a new insert in those old pamphlets or a new pamphlet altogether, really describing all the downtown Friday Night Live events. So every Friday night, we're looking at having different acoustics, different bands, and whatnot in the park. So exciting news there. Opportunity grants funded by Explore Two Rivers. I don't know, Joe, did you have anything more?
Okay. So the Explore Two Rivers Board recently approved five opportunity grants in support of new or existing community events. The grants range from $500 to $1,000. The events receiving support in this grant cycle are Snow Fest, Lake Shore Shipwreck Sip Fest, Two Rivers: A Celebration of the Arts, Two Rivers: Kiwanis Fish Derbies, or Derby, Harmony Lives on the Schmidt Brothers Stage.
And finally, 50th Anniversary EMS Week, May 19th to May 25th. I think Dave will be talking about it a little bit further with a proclamation. A couple of events coming up. Lake Shore Shipwreck Sip Fest, Saturday, May 25th, noon to 3 p.m., Point Beach State Forest. We encourage you to go down there. There's going to be raffles, food, really a great event for 21 and older. The Washington House is reopening for the summer. Fun for all ages, door prizes, refreshment, live music, that Sunday, May 26, noon to 8. They did reach out to the police department, and we're looking to revamp some of the, the display over there. So I provided Tootsie over there with quite a bit of, of old memorabilia to really kickstart what we really had kind of lacking over there from the police department standpoint. And in essence, she gave me a tour, and there's some really fantastic looking stuff over there. She's really cleaned up that place, and it looks amazing. Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony, Monday, May 27. The city of Two Rivers, in cooperation with Robert E. Burns Post 165 of the American Legion, observes Memorial Day. Activities begin in Central Park East at 8:30 a.m. with a reading of Honor Roll and tolling the bell to honor 62 members of the U.S. Armed Forces from Two Rivers who were killed in action from Civil War to the Operation Iraqi Freedom. A wreath laying ceremony will follow at the Soldiers Monument. The parade begins at 9 a.m. The route begins at Washington Street and 18th Street, north to 22nd Street, west to Forest Avenue, and north to Calvary Pioneer's Rest Cemetery at 1801 26th Street. If participating in the parade staging is in the city hall parking lot on Jefferson Street between 17th and 18th Streets, that is a little bit different this year, no parking on Jefferson Street. At 9:30, a ceremony will be held at the platform at Pioneer's Rest. Following that program, the combined firing squads of the American Legion and Veterans of Foreign Wars will also pay tribute to the veterans, who will present military honors to veterans interred from Forest View Holy Cross Cemetery located at 3801 Mishkot Road. We also have concerts in the park, jazz band in, or jazz in the park, Tuesday, May 28th, 6 o'clock to 8 p.m., Central Park West. We also have the banners commemorating the heroes, Wednesday, May 22nd, at 9:30 a.m., Central Park East. Those will be the utility pole banners in Central Park East, bearing the name of all the fallen Two Rivers residents. And the senior center is having a back-to-school carnival with donations of new school supplies accepted, June 1st to August 2nd. Drop-off is at the senior center. Monetary donations are also accepted. And as Darla had mentioned, the front yard vegetable gardens, I know we have some of those pamphlets going around too, explaining how you can get more information by either calling or visiting tworivers.org. Two Rivers Night at the Ballpark, we mentioned this last meeting as well, that's Saturday, July 13th, 6:40 p.m. at Fox City Stadium. Encourage everybody to get out there. $3 gets donated back to Two Rivers Parking Rec Department Youth Sports Fund. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate that. On to 10, the consent agenda. Under A, we have presentation of minutes. We have two, one from the city council work session, and one from the city council regular meeting. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. On to B, we have minutes of meetings. There are five. Western Public Library, Public Utilities Committee, Public Works Committee, Plan Commission, and Advisory Rec Board. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, we have department reports for April 2024. There are 11 of those. Recommended action for that is a motion to receive and file. Under D, we have summary of verified bills for the month of April 2024 for $4,118,844.14. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under E, we have applications and petitions. There are three of those. The first one is a new Class B, Class B combination license for RTM Bar LLC. The DBA is RTM Bar on 1200 Madison Street. Becky Krishner is the agent. License expires on June 30th, 2024. We also have a temporary Class B, Class B license for Casa Guadalupe Education Center, Latino American Beach Festival on July 12th and 13th, 2024, at Neshota Park, 2111 Pierce Street. And we also have a temporary Class B license for the Two Rivers Fish Derby Incorporated, Two Rivers Fish Derby and Festival, July 20th and 21st, 2024, at Walsh Field. The recommended action for that is a motion to approve the applications and authorize issuance of the licenses. On to F, we have a set a public hearing on ordinance to rezone 1706 16th Street, parcel 053-000-063-102.05, from industrial I-2 to business B-1, submitted by Quasus Construction Incorporated applicant and Halapa Marketing LLC owner. The recommended action will be a motion to set public hearing on June 3rd, 2024. a motion to set public hearing on June 3rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM. The second one, set public hearing on conditional use permit for a drive-through operation at Fast Taco, 3337 Mishkot Road in the B-1 Business District, submitted, submitted by Armando Cruz, which is the tenant. Recommended action is a motion to set public hearing on June 3rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM. And finally, we have a set public hearing on proposed zoning code to create a new downtown and waterfront overlay district. The recommended action is a motion to set public hearing on June 17th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. The recommended action for the Consent Agenda is a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion. Thank you, Bill. Looking for a second? Second by Tim. Any discussion? Yes, Mark?
I get one comment and two questions. First, reading the reports, I'm just always amazed, this sort of citizens listening, of the amount of work and hour and time and energy each one of our departments spend on training, preparing their current staff and future staff for challenges to be more efficient, safer, and react faster to our community needs. So I commend each department head and what you do because you make us a safer place. So thank you for that. I have a question for our, our library. Recently, we had the years of human migration. Jeff, maybe you can address this, but I'm just, I'm curious, I went to two of those sessions. I couldn't get to a couple of them because they were booked solid and the library seemed real busy. What are you going to do for us next? And congratulations on a very successful event. And do you have any idea of how many people came to this event?
Sure. Thanks, Mark. Yeah, we're not quite ready to venture on what's next. We're still recovering a little bit from what just happened. But at any rate, we had over 8,000 visitors come through our front doors. The programming you mentioned, we had 486 people come to the library programs. Our Dramatic Play Center, and this is a conservative estimate, during that period from March 18th through April 23rd, we're estimating about 3,000 kids and families visited the Dramatic Play Center. Where the collage, the community collage, we had 725 people participate in that. That community collage will then be part of our summer reading decorations at the library. So we're going to incorporate that as well. And those are just some of the, the numbers. We had docents taking numbers at the, at the exhibit itself and answering questions. We had 795 people come through there. So we're, we're deeming it a very successful event for the library. And stay tuned. We'll, we'll keep you posted on what's coming up next.
We were one of the few selected cities in the country to have that event. So thank you and your staff for all the hard work. We appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Then the last comment I have is, Scott, I think it'd be a real good idea because I'm not completely sure. The public hearing on the waterfront overlay, we want, when we put that notice up, we might want to tell what an overlay waterfront hearing means and what it all entails because I think there's a lot of interest in that in the community.
Yeah, I think so too. I think we might hear that during one of the next city council meetings. Any other discussion?
Doesn't a public hearing go to the paper? Isn't that the point? Yeah. So they will hear about it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll see that. And I'm sure we'll get some information.
But I meant, and I'm not sure what an overview or lay of the district means.
That's, that's what we posted in the paper.
Yeah. Yeah, the information we posted, like I said, I think we, you, Alice Elizabeth is coming up right now to talk about it.
Hi, everyone. These three items that are here unfortunately create confusion by being singled out and pulled out of our Plan Commission packets. These are items that have been discussed at the Plan Commission but have no action for you as a council to do. This is administrative only. These will be discussed and presented to you as a council at a public hearing at a later date. So unfortunately, it's a bit confusing to have them singled out because you will be presented these items and it will be explained to you. And to your point, we will have them placed in the paper multiple times up, leading up to a public hearing. So really, this is just an administrative action.
Right. It's just to set the
Correct. Yes.
Will it also be a standard where the community will be able to add, import, turn it?
Correct. Just like any public hearing. So really, even discussing this is, is not something that needs to be done. Unfortunately, having this pulled out does create confusion. Yep. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, no discussion. This will be a voice vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Number 11, City Council Formal Items. Under A, National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 19th through the 25th, 2024. Connecting the World Through Public Works. Recommended action will be a motion to read and adopt the proclamation. Matt is already up at the podium. Go ahead, sir.
So this year's slogan for National Public Works Week from May 19th through May 25th is advancing quality of life for all. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of City of Two Rivers. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government, and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in City of Two Rivers to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association, be it now proclaim the City Council of the City of Two Rivers, do hereby declare the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our nation's health, safety, advancing quality of life for all.
Excuse me. Thank you, sir. Looking for a motion to adopt the proclamation. Motion by Darla. Darla's motioned. Do a second, Bonnie?
Sir.
Bonnie will second. Discussion. Seeing none. This is roll call vote. Lisa?
Darla Leclair, aye. Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclair?
Aye.
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Hosky?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you for that. Onto B, proclamation declaring May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The recommended action will be a motion to read and adopt the proclamation. Our fire chief is on his way to the podium.
Thank you. Yeah, this week, we acknowledge the, the efforts of our EMS providers in the city and throughout the nation. These are some dedicated professional individuals. And I'm very honored to work with them on a daily basis. So they're, they're truly great men and women. So I'd like to read this proclamation for EMS Week 2024. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service to all residents of our community. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. Whereas the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physicians, nurses, skilled dispatchers, EMTs, paramedics, firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators, and others. Whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas it's appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating EMS Week. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With yours, this year's theme being EMS Where Emergency Care Begins, we encourage the community to observe this week and throughout the year with participation in the appropriate program ceremonies and activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to adopt the proclamation.
I will make that.
Thank you, Adam. Second by Bill. Any discussion?
I just want to say that the guys and girls down at the fire department really do an amazing job. And unfortunately, we've had a couple of experiences where I had to use them with family members or so on, and, and they were right there and then helped save lives. And it's, it's truly miracle when you sit there and witness it. So hats off to your men and women.
So that's appreciated.
Well said, Adam. But I'd like to add a comment to your families too. They sacrifice a lot of time and thank you to support these hard workers in the community, your family members.
Okay. Any other discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Lisa?
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclair?
Aye.
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Bill, Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Hosky?
Aye.
Darla Leclair?
Aye.
All in favor.
On to C, Resolution Express, Express, Expressing, excuse me, appreciation for members of committees, commissions, and boards who retired as of April 2023 or have ended their service during this past year. The recommended motion will be a motion to read and adopt the resolution. Ben, got it?
In regards to those retirees, whereas many hours are volunteered by the citizen members of committees, commissions, and boards, and whereas the following citizens have volunteered for the betterment of the community and have recently completed their terms on the committees, commissions, and boards identified, Dick Klinkner, Business and Industrial Development Committee, also Community Development Authority, Virginia Kaufman, Committee on Aging, Doug Brandt, Environmental Advisory Board, Eric Pangburn, the Plan Commission. Whereas it is appropriate that the City of Two Rivers and its citizens express their appreciation for the services these volunteer citizens provide, and whereas their efforts to promote public interest and improve the welfare of the residents of the community should not go unnoticed. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Two Rivers expresses its official commendation for their services, and be it for the resolve that the city manager send a copy of this resolution to the retiring committee, commission, and board members as a token of official thanks and appreciation of the city council, approve this 20th day of May 2024.
Thank you, Ben. Looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution as read.
Thank you, Shannon. Looking for a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any discussion? Seeing nothing. Roll call vote. Lisa?
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclair?
Aye.
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Hosky?
Aye.
Darla Leclair?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you for that. Onto D, sidewalk installation along the Columbus Street frontage of 2848 Memorial Drive, former Shoreline Credit Union, to connect to planned pedestrian crossing at Memorial Drive, about 175 feet. The recommended action is receive and file a special assessment hearing waiver from the property owner with direction to city staff to continue construction of new sidewalk. Matt? Saw you standing there, so I knew you were coming up.
I was coming up if there was any question or need to. More or less, the waiver is to just that, waive the public hearing, basically expediting the process of installing the sidewalk on Columbus Drive for the Memorial Drive project that is slated for next year. So we get a crosswalk at the north side of Columbus, crossing over Memorial Drive. So that is basically what the waiver is. And yes, would appreciate it if you would receive and file.
Okay. Looking for a motion to receive and file. Thank you, Tim. Looking for a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
By Mark. Any discussion? Seeing none. This is a voice vote.
I'm sorry, Matt. I just, I just want to make this clear. He's... What are we?
The waiver is for a special assessment hearing.
And so Oh, so he doesn't, we're not going to have that?
We're not going to have a public hearing for the assessments. So he is basically recognizing this is for the betterment of the community. He's not happy about having to pay for it. But he recognizes that it is a benefit towards the
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion? Or questions? Okay, seeing none. This is a voice vote. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Onto E, ordinance amendment pertaining to kennel dog breeder. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Ben?
Yeah, just a little change. Again, this is just updating the language that the state changed for the name of that license. So it's really just changing kennel license to dog breeder.
And that was what changed again, two different places?
I believe so. Amanda had handled that. She just described that, that wording to me.
Gotcha. Plain and simple. Looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So I'd like, I have a question. Is this replacing the word kennel? In other words, if somebody does have a kennel to keep dogs overnight, or?
Yeah, so the practice is not changing. The state just changed the language.
Oh, so you, what does that mean if you have a kennel and you're not breeding dogs? You're just taking care of them? I mean, what is that, what is that called?
I'm not sure where you're going with that.
There's no longer a kennel license. There's no longer a kennel license.
There's just a breeding license.
No, no. The kennel is redefined as a dog breeder license. That's
Oh, okay.
Just the change in the language of the statute. A license will still be required, by my understanding, for one reason or another. You don't like kennel.
I guess not.
Rather it be a dog breeder license.
Like Amanda explained, the state required that change as well with their ordinance.
Oh, it just didn't make sense to me.
Is this something that kind of broadens the ordinance so that it covers both things, basically?
I don't think it changes anything other than the wording. Their, their preference for the wording. So now we have to change our ordinance.
I don't think it changes the business operations to change their name from, if they have kennels on a sign, they don't have to change it to breeder, do they?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Well, you see the confusion though. It's
I understand. I think the state created that confusion, not us. But now we have to adjust our wording so that we can still hand out those licenses so they can continue their businesses.
Okay. Looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll make that motion to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Bonnie. Second by Darla. This will be, I'm sorry, discussion? No discussion? Then this will be a roll call vote.
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Hosky?
Aye.
Darla Leclair?
Aye.
Mark Bitner? Mark Bitner? Shannon Derby?
Aye.
And Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you. On to F, wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance resolution. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution. Matt is already standing and is on his way to the podium.
Well, it's just fitting that it's National Public Works Week and Wednesday is wastewater professional week. So we must also bring our annual report forward. That is required by the DNR. Overall, we did pretty much the same as we have in the past with one exception. Under the influence BOD, we did score a little lower because of a bacteria outbreak, which was cleaned up and taken care of. We hope we have it under control since then. The other is the BOD influence, and that's primarily being caused by Riverside Foods with the, hopefully soon, the implementation of their fat oil grease separator that we approved, allowing them to put materials within the street to take their private wastewater from one side of the street to the other side. So overall, again, we need that state proclamation, or the state or the resolution stating that we have recognized what we have done and any recommendations that we need to move forward. So and then that has to be part of our report to the DNR, which will be submitted once approved.
Okay, looking for a motion to adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Bill. Seconded by Tim. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Is that being resolved? Because this issue, first of all, we hardly ever get Fs in this city from their report. And is this issue being close to being solved with the influence? Because isn't it, isn't there a big problem with one particular place?
Yes, and as I just mentioned, it should hopefully be taken care of with the installation of the oil and grease separator being installed by Riverside Foods. Hopefully, that'll take care of it. Unfortunately, because we're almost the midpoint of twenty-twenty-four, by the time it actually gets implemented and new samples or better samples are obtained for this year, we will probably see still a lower than desired score for twenty-twenty-four. So we'll recognize that in twenty-five, in the twenty-five report. But hopefully, moving forward in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, we should hopefully get a better than failing grade.
Any other discussion? Or questions? Okay, seeing nothing. This will be a roll call vote. Lisa?
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Wawoski?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby? Bill Leclerc? All in favor.
Thank you. On to G, award of bids for scattered site-led water service lateral replacement. The recommended action is a motion to award the bid to Mammoth Construction based on the company's low-qualified bid of three million five hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and the supplementary bid of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars for a total contract value of three million nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Matt? Sorry, I said-
No problem.
There are a lot of numbers.
Well, you covered the highlight there.
Right, anything else?
The bids were reviewed by our consultant Town and Country. They made sure there was no errors or deficiencies in that. The bids as they came in, Town and Country's memo is attached as well. And overall, the bids came in below engineers' cost estimate. However, within my memo, I have it broken out as to potential funding sources and cost per task. And the public-side water services, so from the main to the curb stop in the terrace or in the sidewalk area is roughly one point six million dollars. And that'll be funded partially by American Rescue Plan Act funds. And there's in parentheses, twenty-twenty-five Safe Drinking Water Fund dollars. I'll continue on. I'll come back to those parentheses. The sanitary laterals within the roadway, we're assuming there will be two hundred of those at about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Private side or pavement restoration, again, about half of that cost is anticipated with clean water funds and twenty-twenty-five Safe Drinking Water Funds or general obligation. Private water services, approximately two hundred of those will be funded out of the Safe Drinking Water Fund and reimbursed out of the ARPA funds and private funds. And the private sanitary lateral outside of the roadway will be done by private funds. So the private funds will be literally that. Dollars that will be charged to the property owners, and they will have up to five years to reimburse those costs. On the private water service side, the discussion has been loaning property owners costs of over two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars over the twenty-five hundred dollar grant dollars that they can put on a five-year loan at roughly two percent over borrowing or roughly two and a half percent. We don't have those final documents yet, so the half percent is still in question. But it's going to be somewhere around there. The parentheses is because we are short some dollars. What we have for American Rescue Plan Act dollars, the safe drinking and clean water, primarily the safe drinking, we are short about seventy, seventy-one full water services. So roughly about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars short for the total contract. This contract is over a two-year period. So we will be looking at having all the work completed by around September, October of next year so we can complete all the final paperwork prior to year's end so we can fully expend all the ARPA funds. So it is our anticipation, we will get additional safe drinking water dollars for next year. And if we cannot get those safe drinking water dollars, we would be looking at possibly for the pavement side doing general obligation borrowing or reducing the total contract quantity from roughly three hundred services down to about two hundred and thirty. We'll know where we're at prior to the end of this year regarding whether or not we will get those safe drinking water funds. So we'll be able to make that educated decision as far as quantities of water services being completed as a total contract before twenty-twenty-five starts. So with all that being said, I feel confident in, and Town and Country feels confident that we can move forward in awarding this contract for the full dollar amount. And if necessary, do a change order to reduce those quantities as a last resort, if that makes sense.
Action for Matt?
I see that that even though we're lower than what you expected or the engineers expected, we are higher on the public side and lower on the private side. So it's going to cost the public more out of the, is this coming out of stormwater? Where's our funds coming from?
The public side is coming out of Clean Water Fund. And, well, primarily Clean Water Fund on the sanitary side. And the pavement restoration is a combination of Clean Water Funds and Safe Drinking Water Funds. Okay, so in the past, a lot of those costs, because they were part of a larger project, were covered under those two programs, DNR funding sources. When we did scatter laterals in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, we were using ARPA funds. However, the county would not reimburse this or match the city's costs of the ARPA funds. So right now, there's a city ARPA pot of money and there's a county pot of money. The city utilized the ARPA funds for the pavement restoration. The county did not see that as a justified expense. So we did not get reimbursed for some of those dollars. So we had to include the pavement restoration into the contract, unlike past years, so that we ensure that we can get that matching dollars.
And then second, I know you were just talking about future before, and you're talking about the the interest rates. I really do strongly hope that we pass on the same interest rate that we're borrowing that money at. I don't want to see that jacked up when you bring that back.
Well, the two percent over borrowing is our standard assessment policy. And basically, I'll call it borrowing onto the property owners. So, and that's been a longstanding practice for all the communities I've worked with and Two Rivers up until this point. There has been no discussion of making that adjustment, except for this program that we're looking at. It would be two and a half percent versus our standard assessment rate loan factor is six percent. So it's basically four plus two for six.
Mark, did you have a question?
I guess I'm a little uncomfortable about approving this, which needs to be done, and we need to work it out some way, with a known shortfall of six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And still some good options to get us the funding to cover the shortage, which we won't know until two years from now. Is there anything?
We'll know the shortfall, we'll know whether or not we have that funding by October, November of this year.
And in order to get started in the timely fashion we want, we have to start it now rather than, no. Can we do the coverage, just part of it, it's up until the shortage and stop? And if we don't get it, we have to do it the following year, or is that not possible in the project?
If we don't award the whole contract now, we can reduce the quantity now, and if we come up with those funds, put it back in. However, in most contract language, including this one, the contractor can put on up to a fifteen percent surcharge. So we would actually be paying more. So it would actually be beneficial to award the whole and then look at reducing it after the fact.
If there's no way we can do what we need to do for the benefit of the city and not let the contract dictate a fifteen percent demand?
It's in the contract language.
It's in their contract, but I mean, do we have to sign that contract that's in with that language?
Yes. If they don't, if we would take out those additional seventy services by putting them back in, back up to three hundred, the contractor can charge us additional up to fifteen percent profit and overhead.
Okay, looking for a motion, and then we can have council discussion. Looking for a motion to award the bid to Mammoth Construction. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Darla. Council discussion? Looks like he has something he wants us to ask her.
I'm just still uncertain. It sounds like we could get the money, but I mean, we're approving a three point nine, or three hundred and ninety thousand, nine million dollar project.
But basically, you said, Matt, that if we can't do it, we can do a change for the contract that says, hey, Mammoth, no, we can't do this. We're backing off then.
But the change doesn't trigger a fifteen percent increase for the total contract.
Not if you go down.
Not if we-
Only if you take them out now and increase it later.
Add stuff to the contract? It costs more to add if you subtract. But it doesn't if we can't afford it, we don't penalize.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
It's a public construction contract, right?
Correct.
So municipalities are bound to accept the lowest responsible bid from the lowest responsible bidder, I should say.
Correct.
So I think the question would be, is Mammoth the lowest responsible bidder?
Which they are.
And to say otherwise, I guess we'd have to have some sort of reason. If the council is thinking of not awarding the bid, I guess either take no action or come up with an explanation as to why it's not considered to be a responsible or appropriate bid.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so this will be a roll call vote.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Wawoski?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby? Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Patri?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you for that. On to H, Resolution Adopting Amendment Number Two to TID twelve for the Cobblestone Hotel TID boundaries and project plan to support redevelopment. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution. Elizabeth, do you have anything for this, or Ben? This is just basically expanding the, we talked about this one quite a bit already.
We talked about it, but if you have questions, I guess.
Yeah. Otherwise, I'll just go right to look for a motion to adopt the resolution. And then we can have council discussion if there's any.
Well, should we let the public know?
What do you mean?
What's in it?
Yeah, we certainly can. Do you want to explain that, Elizabeth, or should we just read the resolution?
Whatever you would prefer. I can do a quick summary?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay, okay. It'd be easier. I don't actually have a copy of the resolution right in front of me. But what we have is a second amendment to TID number twelve. We, this is the TID boundary that encompasses the cobblestone area, the downtown and the harbor area. That was the initial intention of TID twelve was to remove blight in this area. This is a blight TID. And this particular amendment, number two, has come about because we had two investors looking for assistance within this area. One is within the boundaries of TID twelve, and one is just outside and adjacent to this boundary. These two properties and investors, one is at fourteen twenty-one Washington Street, and the other is at fourteen fifteen Sixteenth Streets. So both of these property owners are looking to make investments. And that is what has been the impetus behind making an amendment to the project plan and also subsequent the boundaries as well to facilitate these investments. So they will be expanding their businesses and also improving them because fourteen fifteen Sixteenth Street is also a blighted property. And so that will require an investment from that owner. So fourteen twenty- So 1421 Washington Street is, um, expanding their business and making a significant investment of approximately $650,000. And 1415 16th Street, um, is going to be making, um, almost, um, $750,000 investment, um, creating, um, a new boutique hotel at that location. So these two investments, um, in the TID will create significant, um, increment within the area. Um, so, uh, they have asked for assistance, which is approximately a total of $180,000 for pay-as-you-go. So the TID project plan, um, identifies those expenditures, and that's all that it does. We, the city council would have to come, we would have to come back to you with development plans, I'm sorry, development agreements identifying those two separate funding amounts with, um, the terms and conditions, which would require your approval. And, um, in addition to that, the project plan identifies some public expenditures, um, which simply, um, are a list of expenditures that if they are financially feasible within this boundary, um, they would also then come to you for review and approval. And the plan also lists those, which include an investment in the high lift building or the pump house, which is a city-owned property. The, um, the target for that is, um, in the future to be a welcome visitor center. And the city has identified that as a future use, should that, um, become financially feasible to invest in that. Um, looking at some infrastructure improvements at the intersection of 15th, Jefferson and East River Street, because that is an intersection that needs improvement for safety purposes. Um, the same is true at Lake Washington and 12th Street, looking at some safety concerns there. This project plan identifies some acquisition of property into the future, so we've identified some funds there. And, um, we've continued to identify assistance to businesses. So we set aside $50,000 for that investment into the future. All of these items, again, are if it's financially feasible and would come back to city council for approval, should those investments move forward. So that in summary is what the CID is for. Um, all of these investments, um, would not be able to move forward unless the TID, um, assistance were made available, which is also a statutory requirement. And again, this is for a blight TID, so, um, the improvement at 1415 16th Street is to improve a blighted property. So, um, that's a summary of what this is about. I'm happy to answer any questions. But I do wanna point out that the pro forma, um, is included in your document for, um, both properties, and it does show that the expenditures would be recovered, um, well within the timeline of the life of this TID, which is 2046. So, um, Baird has put together the hypothetical cash flow pro forma analysis, um, which shows, um, the projections of the gain of the TIF increment, and that it would definitely be recovered within the timeline. So it would cash flow, which is always what we're looking for. And, um, those projections indicate that the monies, should they be approved by this council, would definitely be recouped because the investments being made and projected with this assistance is a definite good return of investment to assist, to assist these, um, businesses to help with their investments that they're asking for. So that's a summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Otherwise, looking for a motion to adopt the resolution. Let's see, a motion by Darla, seconded by Shannon. This will be a, I'm sorry, I always forget, discussion.
I do have a roll call, or a roll call. I do have a question for Elizabeth.
Yes.
When, when these said businesses, I know one of the businesses has an existing building now and buying more property, are we including both of those properties? Are they adjoining addresses when they put those both into this TID district? Or is it just the property that they're improving?
The 1421 is the one I think you're thinking about. That's already included within this boundary. So both of those are.
It's just an expenditure.
Correct. They're all, it's already in there.
When did we tie that in? When we went to M and M?
It was already in there. So yeah, it's been in there. The one that we are moving the, um, boundary to include, um, is the 1415 16th Street. Yeah, and it's just immediately adjacent to, which is what allows us to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing, this is a roll call vote. Lisa?
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Wuhuski?
Aye.
Darla Leclaire?
Aye.
Mark Bitner? Absent. Shannon Derby? Bill Leclaire?
Aye.
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
All in favor?
Uh, onto I. Authorization for facade grant agreement to provide $10,000 grant to Meridian Wellness LLC, 2221 Lincoln Avenue, to assist with the redevelopment of that properly, property, former Union State Nicolay Bank property, to be funded from TID number eight. Total project is $25,926. Uh, the recommended action will be a motion to authorize the grant as recommended by the Community Development Director and the Main Street Design Committee, consistent with program guidelines previously adopted by the city council, agreement to be drafted by Community Development Office, signed by city manager and city clerk. Elizabeth, you wanna give us a summary on this one? Please.
Um, and Darla, if there's anything, uh, please let me know that I need to add to this. So we have an application that happens to be just outside the bid district, which then transfers the facade grant, um, program into the city's partnership with any business that's looking to, um, have assistance from TID funds that are available. So we have a new business, Meridian Wellness, that's looking to have some upgrades made to the facade. And so that application was made and reviewed by the design committee that we partner with from Main Street. And, um, the expenditures and the design was reviewed and approved by that committee and, and the city, just, uh, um, in conjunction with that group. So, um, they have put forward a, a, um, a nice project, and so it has been recommended for approval. It's a reimbursement-based program, if you may not know that yet. Um, and so, um, just happy to have this business and their, um, their wonderful, um, programs that they will be offering there. So, um, it's recommended for approval by the design committee and from staff, so we're just looking to have your authorization to move forward with that.
Okay. Uh, looking for that motion to authorize the grant. Motion by Bill, seconded by. Thank you, Mark. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, what was the, uh, original, just from memory, the, uh, number eight, that was part of the original high school, or what was that from?
TID eight?
Project, yeah.
It would've been Lincoln.
I have money left.
It's not coming from the TID, right? It's coming from the, from the grant, from the facade grant program.
Well, it, it is money that needs to be spent going towards this program, correct.
Okay, it's not coming from.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Onto 12 for information only. Uh, City Hall will be closed next Monday, May 27th, 2024, in observance of Memorial Day. I do believe we all had the notification from PJ that we're welcome to march in the Memorial Day Parade next week, Monday. So hope to see most of the council there, if you can make it. Then city council work session will be the next day, Tuesday, May 28th, at 6 o'clock PM. And then the next city council regular meeting will be Monday, June 3rd, at 6 o'clock PM. And with that, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Tim, seconded by Shannon. All in favor, or I'm sorry, discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you and good night.